Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Graven.
Here.
Mr. Phipps.
Here.
Mayor Hall.
Here. Consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask if anyone desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Anybody would like to remove any items? Hearing none. I move the minutes of the regular meeting of February the 6th, 2024, and the bills and payroll for the first half of February is approved. Have a second to that motion.
Second.
And, uh...
Roll call.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that have not been identified on this agenda, but the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentation to three minutes and to avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you to state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Would anybody like to address the council tonight? Yes. Yeah, come up.
Melissa Danby.
Yeah, go, yeah, right there, because we got people that might be online and we'd like for them to hear your lovely voice.
Well, thank you, Mayor Hall. I am Melissa. I am here representing the Mattoon and Motion Housing Committee tonight, and we are in support of ordinances that are going to be presented tonight for all of the housing development changes that are hugely needed in Mattoon.
Okay. Any questions anybody has for Melissa? Okay, fine, thank you very much. Anybody else like to address the council? Yes.
I just want to kind of back her up there. I'm a realtor, I need to show the area, so I would just enter the 2000 property. We do have a serious housing need in Mattoon on the middle side and on the west side. I spent a lot of time looking over this plan with Alex and I think it's well thought out. It's just that he protects you, I mean, it's not going to be a difference.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none. Anybody else like to address the council on any subject?
Anybody online?
No one's online.
Is anybody online today?
No.
Just me.
Okay. All right, uh, then we start to go to new business.
I move to approve Council Decision Request 2024-2450, awarding the bid of $539,990 from Curry Construction for the wastewater treatment plant primary pump replacement project.
Can I have a second to that motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Graven, seconds that, and then any discussion? Anybody like to make any comments about this?
Uh, the only comment I have, Mayor, this, uh, the estimate from Curry is, is going to come in about $125,000 less than we had budgeted. And this will, uh, basically finish off the primary pumps at the wastewater treatment plant.
Very good. So is that thanks to our new, uh, Public Works Director? Did he do this for us?
I don't know if I have much to do with it.
He, he accepted the bids.
Yeah. You would accept that? Okay.
How many bidders, how many bidders do we have? Curry, Curry was the only bidder on this one.
So he gets a percent.
That's right. Yeah.
That was pretty basic.
Okay. So any other comments anybody like to say?
No.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other comments anybody has? All right, roll call.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes.
I motion to approve Council Decision Request 2024-2451, approving the amended agreement between the City of Mattoon and Illinois Department of Transportation for the city's anticipated participation in the resource, resurfacing of Illinois 16 from Swords to the Lakeland Boulevard, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
And can we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Cox? And any discussion?
This, this is direct, uh, as a direct result of the new, uh...
Our new director. Okay, well, good. Two, you got two gold stars for the day.
Well, we saved, I think, about $78,000 on this agreement that you approved several months back.
Yep.
After exonerating, if I could see that, like, it didn't make a lot of sense that we were paying for some of the things we've insisted, so got that taken care of. Watching a close look at action.
Yep.
Good deal. Any other comments?
Like I said, that one was directly by Dave, so it's good.
And, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Uh, the, the next three motions are related to housing issues, and I would like Alex to make just a couple of quick comments before we get, go to those, because your comments are going to be general to all of them. So go ahead.
Uh, so, yeah, I mean, this is really the work of the Mattoon Motion Housing Committee. Uh, you know, we've had over a hundred folks coming out in support of, you know, housing being one of the top six priorities for our community back in 2022, and then also back in 2017. We've always had that committee since the, et cetera, Mattoon Emotion, right? And so, you know, over the past, what, seven years now, uh, we've been working on trying to really move away from, you know, the micro level needs and get over to the macro side. And this is how we do that. So, you know, quick overview, 31.6% of the largest support in our community was built in 1939, and the smallest percent, 1.5%, has been built since 2010. You know, something needs to change, right? We need to move our community forward in a positive direction with new development, and we should be incentivizing, you know, new development in our community, making it easier for most, and that's really at the heart of these ordinance provisions, uh, you know, and so, for example, would be compact homes. We have a developer that is ready to go 10 homes a year to develop housing in our community around 500 acres per foot, 10 a year. Today, that's illegal to build in Mattoon. You can't do that because it's less than 768 square feet. And so, you know, these ordinance, while not being specific to that developer, of where developers like her be created within our community, primarily, you know, these aren't homes that are going on single-family lots, primarily, you know, that it's going to be a rezoning of certain areas of town that are prime for redevelopment, like potentially that block that's for sale, completely vacant, right next to the skate in town. That would be a perfect opportunity for something like this. Uh, but if it does go on, it's going to be a special use that runs with the plan that still, throughout the entire process here, allows for community input. All of this has to go through the planning commission and through city council. No singular compact home would ever be created without your consent. So, you know, moving on from there, the planned unit development ordinance, that is actually already on the books today. We just updated it to reflect current positions and change some of the percentages of what the preferences allow. So what that really looks like is, quite frankly, flexibility for developers. So you, if you have a large vacant parcel, which the city currently has, 30-plus acres right across from Fire Bay, we could rezone that as a PUD and have a developer come, and the city would get out of the way in terms of potentially arbitrary regulations, setbacks for a property that doesn't have any adjacent homes around it. Uh, so it allows for that flexibility. What it doesn't allow for is skirting around building codes. You still have to adhere to the current code through a PUD. All safety considerations are there, and that process for larger developments involves, you know, Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, as is written in the ordinance. Again, we already have these, we just don't use them, we're just updating that ordinance. And actually, the additional parking ordinance is not directly related to housing, uh, so there's really only two housing ordinance that's on the agenda tonight. Uh, but I'd love to take any questions, should anybody have that regarding the compact homes and the planned unit development ordinance, I might add, were approved unanimously by the planning commission.
Can I ask a clar, a clar, because, and my understanding is, when people think of compact homes, they think that, you know, 20, 30,000, these are 100,000 plus, correct? These are very high-quality, they're not, they're not, we would think of as like a tray of the grid, but they are high-quality.
And it... This is new structure, and sticks built can't be readily, yeah, on a foundation, can't be readily purchased out of big box, retail, like a shed, you can just go plot a shed house, right?
Right.
Stick though.
And, and this will help with the infill inside the city limits, the, the lots that we've torn down or people have torn down and, and are not developing, uh, you know, Habitat, you know, hasn't wanted them, we, the building trades hasn't wanted them just because of the, the types of houses in the neighborhood, you know, wouldn't go with what their appraisals are, so, you know, this would be something that would fit in those neighborhoods, a newer, smaller house.
Briefly, you, you could also see on the data here, so this is preliminary results from our community needs assessment, uh, over 562 community respondents in this survey. You can see their graphics on the very last page, and they can't, it's colorblind.
Thank you.
But, uh, but, you know, we're, we're really going to publicize this data to the community. I mean, you have over 27.5% of people in our community are saying that be interested in having a tiny home, right? 27% of the people surveyed said, you know, we want a home, we would be interested in that, and that is the only type of development listed on that section there that is illegal to build today.
I would say thank you, but you made fun of me, so I won't say it. But I will also make one other comment. I talked to Chris a little bit earlier. This opens up some opportunities for the high school, uh, building trades group that didn't, have never really thought about building homes of that type, that small, and that, and that opens up more land that can be developed to do that same thing. So, anyway, I don't know what other kind of comments people have, uh, do we have any off the top of your head? Otherwise, I'll, we'll just go on to the motions then.
Yep.
Okay? Okay. I move to adopt ordinance number 2024-5474, amending Chapter 159 zoning code to establish and to regulate a new zoning designation, R1C, Single Family Resident Compact Home District, uh, special use in reducing the square footage requirements for compact homes under Section 15904, 159.20, 159.24 to 159.33, 159.49, 159.46, and 159.4.50 of the municipal code. Can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Mr. Phipps, and any other comments specifically on this one? Okay, hearing none, uh, roll call.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. I move to adopt ordinance number 2024-5475, amending Chapter 159 of the zoning code to establish non-co-terminous additional parking and special uses under, uses under Section 15904, 159.45(c)(3)(c), 159.46, and 159.47 of the municipal code. Can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Cox, and any particular comments about this motion?
I think that, yeah, so effectively, uh, you know, there's a perception in the community that, you know, if a corporation was to purchase residential property that's zoned residentialally, their principal building on a separate lot is zoned commercially, uh, that, you know, somebody would be able to come in, knock down that area, and build a, you know, parking lot or something like that to expand the park. The things worth noting is that parking lots pay a lot less property tax than structures, right? Uh, and so there should be, you know, that should bring us pause and say, hey, is this the right thing for the community and give community members a voice in that process? And so what this does is basically update the parking use table, uh, in the ordinance and outline, you know, if you have a R1 single-family property, you can build additional parking in any other higher zoning district, but it doesn't work in the other district.
Right.
Uh, that, that's effectively what it is.
Okay. Any other comments?
Uh, just that we were really trying to work on cleaning up the zoning code because it was very vague on, on the parking lot situation, so this, this really puts it where it needs to be, so.
Okay. Uh, ready for roll call?
Yep. Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Upstain.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Um, I move to adopt ordinance number 2020, 2024-5476, adopting an amended planned unit development PUD code for the City of Mattoon and amending Chapter 159 zoning to update the PUD in Section 15904, 15952, 15930, 15946 of the municipal code. Can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second, Mayor.
Mr. Phipps, and any specific comments about this motion?
Outdated, I think it was last, updated in 1988. So, um, the 28 years I've been here, we've never done a PUD, just because of, you know, outdated and everything else, so this is very welcome.
I would like to say, uh, thanks to the Housing Committee and Mattoon Emotion and Alex for all your work on both of these ordinance, all three of them really, and, uh, look forward to some action going forward, so, well done.
Okay, ready for roll call?
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Graven.
Yes.
Mr. Phipps.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mayor Hall.
Yes. Next is the department report, starting with City Administrator Kyle Gill.
Uh, really just been working on, uh, trying to fill vacancies in different positions throughout the city, uh, working with Public Works on several different things, um, the Marina liquor license, filed for that Friday and got a response from the state of Illinois on Saturday, so somebody works for the state on the weekend, and so, uh, gotta reapply through a different email system, uh, but we will be doing that for the Lake Marina. We're working on some permitting through Canadian National for doing some work underneath the railroad, um, sent that, uh, application off today, so, with a fee, so, um, budgets, been working with Beth on budgets, we still have a couple little meetings left on, on the insurance part of stuff for the budget, but everything's looking good, um, and that leads me to, when do we want to have a budget meeting? Um, there's been a couple of responses that maybe on the March 5th meeting, or maybe before the March 5th meeting, earlier that night, we could have a, a special meeting if, uh, council would be available, and then how much do you, how much in the weeds do you want to get into detail? You know, it is balanced budget at this point, and, uh, I, we can go over just projects and, and purchases, big purchases that we have in the budget, or we can get line item by line item if you guys want to, so I kind of will take some advice from you, how you want, how and when you want to do that.
You want that now, or do you...
I mean, we can discuss it now if you guys want to.
Mr. Phipps, you look like you're ready to say something.
No, no, I'll be, I'll be out of state on that Tuesday.
Okay.
I'll have to dial in anyway, so.
So, go ahead.
Yes, uh, let's put the March 5th or the timing aside, um, I'd like to see maybe, I don't know if we need to get some down in the, in the specific details or the weeds, so to speak, but, um, the presentations you've done in the past showing, uh, historical data, charts on, uh...
So, that, that will be in the April meeting, that, that normal presentation, public presentation, I will still be doing that, but if you wanted more details ahead of time...
Some of the plant projects and, and that age, I think would be good, and, uh, that something that's happened before, you presented in the past, it's very helpful.
Um, this is the first time in quite some time we've had, uh, uh, in the black, starting for the, from the first review, and, uh, going through the kind of detail that we went through before, uh, seems like a little bit of waste of time if we don't have any major concerns about the budget. Uh, I, and rather having a separate meeting altogether, it seems like having even a 30-minute meeting before our regular meeting, say at 6:00 to 6:30, makes the most sense. We still get a chance to have whatever issues, we, we can always go to Kyle or Beth or whoever to talk about things, but, uh, as far as, uh, the public discussion part, I, I would think that meeting at 6:00, uh, at that meeting, unless someone has a problem with that.
That's fine.
With the works, is the 20th too late?
Um, let me go back and look, I don't think it's too late. No, I mean, because we're balanced, so it's really, it's never too late, so, we can probably do that.
In order to be, in order to get you there?
Just, uh, face to face, but if, if not, that's fine.
Okay. Let me, let me double check that, but I think it would be fine. Public meeting would be the first one in April, yeah.
Give you enough time to put everything together for...
Oh, yeah, that's...
From the 19th.
Second meeting in, in March.
I've already started working on it, so, yeah, it won't take, it won't take long to put that together.
Okay. All right. Done enough for that one?
Yep.
What else you got?
That's it.
Any other questions?
Open for questions, yep.
We're not definite on a meeting, I'm in, willing to...
Fairly. Right. Uh, probably the 19th should be, should be fine. I'm willing to meet with any of you ahead of time, too, if you have certain questions on anything I know of, uh, you know, Beth and I had sat down with the mayor on a couple questions that he had on different areas, so we're welcome to do that as well, ahead of time, so.
Okay. 6 o'clock?
6:00, 19:00.
That's 6:00, 19:00 at 6 o'clock.
Okay. That's, so that's what, that's what we'll plan unless something comes up that changes our mind.
Yep.
All right. Okay. Uh, next is City Attorney Dan Jones.
I don't have much, there's, uh, nothing, uh, out of the ordinary going on for me here in the last two weeks, so we've got a brown shoe hearing coming up, uh, in first part of March, and I will report back after that, but, um, it'll be one of those stuff for me.
All right, any questions for Dan? Next is City Clerk Susan Bryan.
Just pretty much so business issues, well, personnel and insurance issues.
Okay. Any, any questions for Susan? Finance, Beth, right?
Start with the January financial report. January 24, general time limit was 20.7 million in, I'm, not in terms of 19.1, we need an excess of 1.6. Reform of the banking year, revenue areas that are under budget, percentage of budget on, telling to below 7%. Besides, besides the budget, um, there's some, usual, um, things, benefits, debt and transfers are all tied heavily to property taxes, because you can see a government funding into the budget. So the, the only area that really looks, um, higher than budget is purchase services, and I think that's a temporary situation, could reverse itself, and under capital items, and that's because we decided to let the person who did fire trial. Cash position at the end of January, similar, you know, just over 26 million, yeah, 25.8 a month ago. I have revenue tracking. Fortunately, for the, um, overall, we're $101,000 to money, where a year ago, for the last meeting, we were down 323,000, 24,000, so that seems to be improving. The interest rate cash from general fund as of today, 12.3 million dollars. The last meeting, it was 11.5. I know we're, I need to start spending some of the hard money, so we can see that go down, et cetera. Was there any questions?
Yeah, okay. For the people that are here not having, e, even if you had the sheets that you got, we got in front of us right now, uh, it'd probably be very foreign to you, uh, it'd be like going to the school district and trying to go through all that, uh, but, uh, and even the terminology that we use is not common to most people, so, but, but we do go over these financial statements, particularly looking at revenue, cash balances, major disbursements, comparison of budgets, and, and that's, of course, our best job to say, hey, is there, is there a red flag we ought to be worried about, or, you know, what, what major concerns do we have here? And we can always go into a lot of detail, but that, that's, uh, uh, not too exciting to do that. So, that's, uh, that's all. Any, any questions for Beth? We have. So next we have, uh, Public Works, Dave Clark.
Probably the biggest thing on our list down here is that by April 15th, there's a lead water line service, uh, survey and plan together with the EPA. We've been doing some work on that, but there's a lot more to do, and we'll be able to make that, uh, there'll be some things we'll still be a little bit short on. We're also looking into some potential grants to help with, uh, the data collection, and then we get to the point of actually placing some of those lines and grants for that. Uh, the crew there, water, sewer, streets there, continuing to work on some maintenance things, and I'm happy to report we're making some progress, and some of the things are looking a lot better. One of the things along that line was the street sweeper, which we rejected a bid, there are new ones here, a couple, once a meetings ago, we looked at over real closely, and we feel there's just a few little minor things that we can do that'll fix that up, and it'll be ready to go probably by April 1st, so, uh, we think we'll be at least another couple years out of it by doing that, and so on. We also are replacing a few water lines, uh, out, uh, Lakeland Boulevard, there's one out there that we've been working on, that's now done, uh, some wire repairs and replacements that we've been doing. Uh, met with Todd Fuller, who's our contractor for the Street State project, um, his plan right now is to probably start somewhere around April 1st, uh, he's thinking about three months to have it all completed, and at the same time, we've asked him about, uh, like we've done in the past, replace those lead service lines and the, and so forth there, but then we're also going to look at replacing that water line there, too, while we got it all tore up, so he's going to give us some price for that, haven't seen that yet. State House School Project on Western, uh, for vital school, that's on the IDOT smart eight letting, uh, I looked earlier today, there are a dozen contractors that are looking to bid on that, so hoping to get a real good bid on that, uh, we'll know that day, who the low bidder was, it's a good bid within the, the estimate. After that, it's just good, there won't be any work, we'll start till June, and then it'll be done by high school starters. We talked about the Route 16 project, um, that has not been slated for letting yet, still, they have a right of way issue that they're trying to resolve on IDOT level, so not sure when that'll go to letting, but, uh, we'll keep an eye on that. Uh, been working very diligently with Timberway Horn and, uh, Sports Complex out there, the roadway plans, uh, sanitary sewer, the water, all that, there's just a lot going on with that, some tight timeframes on that, we're hoping that with the roadway, they get the planes here, uh, straightened out, approved by IDOT here in the next couple of weeks, that we'll be able to take that to a letting in March, hopefully bring it to council first part of April for approval, so they can get started. The anticipated completion, phase one of that, which would be basically Fort Worth Way, will be the end of August, and they're looking to have tenants and so forth in there ready to go September 1. Uh, that's city, oh, we have another thing, we're finalizing our seal coating bids, we'll be getting that out for advertising here probably next week, also looking at the concrete and those types of things that we put out for bid that time. And then the last thing, I'm looking at, uh, some lighting for the trail crossing on Richmond Boulevard there between 9th and 10th, uh, it's very dark out there, if you go out there now, you'll see how dark that is, but looking into, uh, using solar and just see what those options might be, and, and save on that electric cost for the lifetime.
Yep.
As far as that, any questions?
I have a particular concern about the sidewalk on Western Avenue, I've been getting regular communications with a grade school young lady at Riddle that's wanting to get that sidewalk finished, and she's sent me letters and, and, uh, and pretty well harassed me, and, and, and I promised her parents, by the way, that when that... me, and, and, and I promised her parents, by the way, that when that sidewalk is finished, that we would have the first ribbon cutting ever for a sidewalk. So we will, we will plan to do that, so don't let that one slip, okay? Just so you know.
Dave, I have a, a quick question. Um, Heritage Park, Wolf Park, uh, Progress, Progress Square, all that is basically going to the Parks Department for maintenance and landscaping and cleanup, just want to make sure, read that right, okay? Good job.
Okay. Any other, any other questions for Dave? Fire Department Chief Heligoss.
Since the last meeting, the guy thanks for dating to call for service, inspectors did 12 inspections, um, and that included all the public and practice schools, uh, their annual inspections, so those are all done. Training, they did, uh, work with Charleston doing, uh, grid training, which is rapid intervention, we plan, and also hazmat. Um, I've been working on a couple of different brands, uh, the primary one is, uh, the AFG grant with Wimmy, um, and then we are, I'm hoping to get the trap this week. Um, I felt that after time into our guy, uh, when he told me that, uh, they were shut down for a couple days due to a death, a 36-year-old, um, worker down there, just complaining of headaches, and ended up having brain, so, not that big. So, I'm hoping this week, uh, geez hoping this week, we will get, but that gun has finally arrived, so I just don't know what exactly. That's all I've got to ask, do you have questions for me?
Any questions for Jeff? Uh, standing in for Chief Gaines is his able Assistant Chief Ryan Hurst, what do you got? Able, not disabled.
Um, first of all, I want to thank, uh, Dan and some public work guys, uh, for that this week, we've had some issues come up last couple of weeks, but Dan has assisted on, but, uh, appreciate your time and effort, and then also TJ Hess, we've been helping us cut down some 3D set public works, uh, we all know that we don't want to see Sam up in a bucket truck, so, we appreciate the help on that, so. Uh, last two weeks, 950 calls to service, 43 arrests, I do want to highlight, uh, we've over the last couple of weeks had several gun arrests, taken a lot of guns off their street, um, four of those six have came from one of our guys, uh, Officer Rowley from our pull-up, so, these times you take a gun off the streets, good, so.
So, any questions? All right, next is, uh, Arts and Tourism Angelia Brigath.
Um, first thing is the Mattoon setting this up, we're a very humble labor of love, um, had several different locations we worked on, and we finally came back around to the one where it landed, so, um, it's, uh, I feel like it's been pretty positive, there's been a couple people that thought we should put it somewhere else, but if that's the worst you can say, then that's okay, right? Um, so we've been working on that for about a year, and so it's, um, it's really cool that we can take advantage of monitor signs and doing it locally, there are lots of companies in the state of Illinois and across the country that do that kind of work, um, much less, um, substantial, uh, at the same price, and so we, I feel really proud that we were able to partner and monitor to get that done, and then also, um, thanks to TJ Hess and Kurt Stretch for working on a lot of the prep work to get that done and completed, so, I feel like it really complements the beginning of, of going downtown, and one of many things that we've done this year, so 23, we really set out from a tourism standpoint to do some things that were significant, uh, the Mattoon sign being one of them, uh, we added things to Heritage Park for, um, for upgrades during light work, but also we added electrical upgrades there for events in the future, we added lights to some of the buildings, um, as a schedule now, a year out, so they would constantly be changing without me having to worry about them, um, and we also did bagel bites, which we're gonna do again this year, so, um, 24, we have some other things to complete, but I'm really proud of all those things. Um, we're, Bagel Fest Entertainment's book, I don't know, can't tell you the secret. So that's coming soon, light work purchases are on the way, um, we're making some plans here, we're also going to be adding some things to Peterson, but also to Heritage Park, and we have a very big anniversary of sorts coming up this year for Lightworks, once again, it's a secret, um, you'll have to stick around and wait for that one, but it's a good one, and we're going to have, um, some really cool features the entire season to celebrate a monumental, a monumental moment for the, for the light works, that's it, this is it.
And, and you're also working on, uh, some issues with the 4th of July already.
Working on 4th of July, yeah.
Right, figure that out, yeah, okay, good. Any questions for Angelia? Uh, next is Community Development, you've already spoke a long time, um, so go ahead and say whatever you can say in the next minute.
I'm gonna give you two seconds, all right, 7:07 on it, uh, so basically this morning, uh, I and I met with the owner of 609 Marion and Old State Village, uh, and they're, uh, basically responding to a letter that we sent them about, hey, there's some code compliance issues here, and so, uh, it sounds like they're going to turn 609 Marion into like a town home duplex area and move residents over to Old State Village, so that's really news, I hope it's real, uh, and really just moving forward from there is pretty good, uh, already halfway through my time working on office bits, 4700 Carter Lane is moving legally, uh, need to connect with Dan about 8:16.
Don't worry about the time.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. I was mostly hurt.
March, on March 14th at 6:00 PM, I got some other stuff, but I'll just get that for now, because I got five seconds left.
We'll, we'll, if you've got anything significant, we'll let you.
We're working on a really neat rant, uh...
Just timed down.
Uh, I'm sorry, but, uh, we're working on the Chicago Region Street, and they, it is a great sign when a group that gives out money reaches out to you and says, hey, apply for this, uh, so we're looking at about maybe $75,000, uh, that we get from them, no match from the city, uh, to conduct a GIS tree inventory of all municipally owned trees, comes at a great time, the stuff switching over to Parks Department, uh, and we're also going to have a permanent foresting management plan come out of that, and, uh, some fun for planting and education of the community, thanks to partnership with Illinois extension, uh, but that's pretty much it, uh, next week is the 35th Annual Rural Community Conference, and it's focused on housing, again, uh, you know, thank you council, uh, for, you know, placing your trust in the Mattoon Emotion Housing Committee, and, uh, you know, and these ordinance changes that I truly believe is going to be great for Mattoon, and just thank you all.
That tree inventory that we talk about, it includes the parks, the boulevards, but it also includes schools, doesn't it? In the past...
If we can get permission from the schools, we can add them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't want to be a really nice addition.
Okay, well, there was a tree inventory done many years ago, most of you weren't born then, but I was, I was old by then, but, but they did do the inventory of the schools, too, I believe, uh, so that would be nice to get that in there. All right, any other, any other questions? All right, last, uh, but not least, we're going to start with any comments from the commissioners, and we'll start with Commissioner Phipps.
Oh, gosh, I really don't have much, I did learn a new word this, tonight, co-terminus.
Co-terminus?
Co-terminus, yeah.
Ask Alex what that means, Tom.
Yeah.
What's that mean?
First day, how could this be on that?
Co-terminus.
That is, how I do, a year later, uh, so it's similar, contiguous, but slightly different, so contiguous, you can have two properties that are separated by alley, totally cool, co-terminus, not allowed, so everything has to be connected kind of within a block, nothing separated, that's...
No, no streets, no alleys or anything like that, separate.
Where the four states join, that's all.
Oh, co-terminus, yeah.
Unless there's streets.
Unless there's a river, or...
Yeah, I have nothing.
That's all you got?
No, I'm good.
Really? Next?
That's it.
Next is Commissioner Graven.
Have a blessed mayor.
Uh, Commissioner Cox.
Uh, had the opportunity last, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday morning to meet with the, uh, three chiefs of the fire department, that was, uh, long overdue, sit down and discussion, and was, uh, very beneficial, I appreciate having all the guys' time and the feedback, had some good open dialogue, and, and, um, good about, uh, the conversations and where the department is going, and, uh, one of the best comments that, uh, had, or that I've heard was from one of our newer firefighters, he's been here for about three years, and he said, you know, some of the younger guys, they really feel like it's a, uh, an upward moving department, and that some good things are, are happening, so that's good to hear, that helps us retain, uh, our firefighters and, uh, good culture and good place for them to come to work, so I appreciate their time and the opportunity to sit down with them, and I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening, uh, Housing Committee, that's, we have a lot to be proud of with Mattoon Emotion in, uh, as a whole, but the Housing Committee has been very, very active since the very beginning, so appreciate everyone's time and the, uh, really, really good work that you, you've been doing, and will continue to do, so, thank you all for being here.
Any questions for Commissioner Cox? Commissioner Clausen, we say it always, save the best.
Well, and it's, it's a lot easier to follow Commissioner Phipps than Commissioner Cox.
Right. No can do, John.
Again?
Uh, just a couple things, Mayor, um, with the good weather, um, John and the guys at the lake are getting the, the two campgrounds ready, uh, we have 103 campsites, and right now, 100 of those are spoken for, campground opens, uh, April, those two campgrounds open April 15th, uh, close on October 15th, and generates, uh, close to $200,000 in revenue. Kurt and TJ are going to be doing some work at Cunningham Park, um, a new sidewalk around equipment, and then they're also going to get rid of that older, um, playground equipment, basketball goals on the north side, just going to get those out of there, and I think that's projected in the new budget as well, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Very good, just a couple comments, uh, from me, I, uh, continue to be involved with the sports complex, I met with the, uh, plant manager, interim plant manager, Bimbo, I also met with AgroFab in Sullivan about the sports complex and some related investments, uh, in our Cola, um, let's see, uh, met with, uh, or I got a meeting tomorrow with a, one of the restaurants that's coming that no one's supposed to know about, but everybody seems to know about, so, uh, this...
What, what was their name again?
What was that name?
It starts with old Navy.
Yeah. So, yeah, there's several things going on, you know, I don't know how you, how you feel in the audience, we don't always act quite this crazy, uh, but we enjoy actually coming to our meetings, I hope, and we still get things done, that's the, that's the important part, so, uh, I don't think all, all meetings are like that, so that's, that's good.
On to Mayor Hall.
Okay. All right, so let's see here, next one is, uh, anybody like to make a motion?
Hey, I'd like to motion, wait, turn.
Okay, second?
Oh, seconded.
And, uh, roll call.
Commissioner Graven?
Yep.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Being adjourned. Thank you, everybody. 45 minutes.